Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, meeting of the Glen County Mainland Planning Commission. We'd like to start our meeting off with invocation followed by a pledge, so please join us if you will.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. Thank you, Father, for the privilege of coming before you. Ask God if you can give us within the discernment to make decisions concerning this community. And, Lord, that you and you alone be glorified in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have several items on our agenda that the public will be involved in, so I'm going to go over the meeting procedures. The planning staff presents the application request to the zoning, to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations, and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of applicants to make presentations on requests and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings and public comments will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with a maximum of five minutes allotted for each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate at speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process is greatly appreciated. Stephanie, are there any planning commission announcements? Okay. So, our first order of business will be to approve the minutes of our last regular meeting. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I offer that the minutes of the last meeting be approved.
One second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Is there any discussion? Commissioners, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Janet, that is unanimous. Before we get on to our first item on our agenda, I would like to let everyone know, if, in the audience, if you're here to discuss the SWINT storage application, that application has been withdrawn at the request of the applicant, so, okay. Our first public hearing item is a conditional use permit. CUP 4151, exit 29 self-storage, 272 South Port Parkway, parcel ID is 03-12691, one acre. The current zoning is planned development, and the proposed zoning, mini warehouse self-storage. Pete Schoenauer, Tidewater Engineering Agent for Jim Bonds Enterprises Incorporated, applicant and owner. Ms. Leaf.
Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. This is CUP 4151, exit 29 self-storage. This is a new self-storage unit at the corner of Martin Palmer and Southport Parkway, and the property is in the Southport Plan Development, and within that PD text, anything that is a mini warehouse or self-storage is a conditional use within that PD. So, that is why this conditional use permit is before you tonight. Currently, the property does not have a building on it. It is used as a commercial parking lot. They do have trailers and vehicles stored there on the property currently, and they are proposing to do the mini warehouse and self-storage. The future land use map does indicate this property is commercial, so it is staying within the same realm of the future land use map. So, the new building they're proposing is a 14,400 square foot, climate-controlled self-storage building, and currently, the property, and we'll show you on the map when we get to that, it is surrounded by self-storage units, so it does keep in keeping with the surrounding uses. So, currently on the property, as I mentioned, there is a commercial parking lot, so a storage of vehicles and trailers on there. One of the staff concerns is that there are a number of vehicles that do not appear to be operable. There's several vehicles that have flat tires, or do not look like they have moved from the site in a very long time, so just a concern moving forward with a conditional use, any kind of outdoor storage that they continue to have on the property, just we want to make sure that those are all operable vehicles, that there is not a salvage yard, and that it's not a salvage vehicle that's on the property. So, this is the map of the property here. So, this is Southport Parkway, and this is Martin Palmer, and this is the property in the corner, and as you can see, it is surrounded by the self-storage units, and all of these have gotten conditional use permits from the county in the past to operate within this PD. So, this is a survey of the property. And then, they have submitted a site plan. There is a site plan approval that's also on your agenda tonight, that is for the new construction of the building, and so this does show, show a good amount of detail, of course, of what they're planning to do on the site. So, here's some photos of the existing property. So, this is standing on Martin Palmer, kind of looking into the property. They have a chain link fence along here. In the site plan, they are proposing to do a type E buffer that would be along both Martin Palmer and Southport. So, just where these vehicles are parked now, this is the general location of where the new building would be constructed. And then, this photo on the right shows a better angle. This concrete walkway that is right here, driveway that's right here, the new building would basically be where this circle is located. That's another photo. The one on the left is standing on Martin Palmer, looking into the property, so you're pretty close to the intersection of Southport and Martin Palmer, at this location. And then, the two pictures on your right, this is standing on Southport Parkway, looking in, so this is showing the existing storage units, and they are sharing an existing access, so they're not proposing a new access into this new storage unit. They would share this existing access into the other storage area. And as I mentioned before, the future land use map does show it as commercial, so it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. So, staff recommendation is to recommend approval of CUP 4151 with the following condition regarding all vehicles and trailers stored outdoors on the property shall be operable, and then, the recommended motion is below. Pete Schoenauer is here representing the applicants, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Does the owner of this property own the adjoining storage property as well?
My understanding, yeah, I believe they do. I'm not 100% if they own all of the adjacent ones, but I do know they own some of the adjacent self-storage units.
The one that they're going to share a drive with is what I'm concerned with.
Right.
They own both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you.
Would the owner please come forward and request action? Please state your name and where you live for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jim Bonds, and I live on St. Simons. The, I do have a little something I wanted to read to you.
Please.
The proposed building is a site plan for 14,400 square foot climate building, which is a fairly low-density development for one acre of storage. We'll have a very wide drive, about 40 feet on the west side of the building, and about 90 feet of grass extending eastward along the length of the building. We are adjacent to a 22-acre parking lot that is fenced, gated, and well-lighted, owned by car hauling firm Hanson and Atkins, and we're across the street from another 20 acres or more of RV Park. So, there are some big operations in our neighborhood, but like us, neither is a big traffic generator. What people may not realize at first when they're looking for storage is that security is probably the most important thing to them. They call asking for prices, but aside from being low cost with, my wife has a commercial here, no hidden fees, we also have always placed, and this is true, an emphasis on security, and this is my big point, that is why we give every customer the use of a free lock with their rental, a plug lock that fits inside the latch that you can't bang off. We're the only place that does that. Why? Because it's security, and the advantage of having another facility nearby and folded it into this one, rather than a smaller facility somewhere else, is that you're gated, you're lighted, you have a keypad entrance, you have a number of other additional reasons why that's going to be a secure storage, and it's the most important thing in storage, and a real good thing about where we're located, because our neighbors are big on that with Hanson and Atkins behind us. Small storage by itself couldn't afford a keypad entrance, gate system, fencing, lighting, and cameras, and extra personnel, and by building adjacent to the existing storage, as opposed to blocks away, we can take advantage of those security features. Exit 29 self-storage is the highest rated, Google-rated, five-star storage in Glen County, and the synergy of having an exit, of having exit 29 storage adjacent to this proposed storage allows for safer, more secure storage, which can offer lower prices to our customers, greater service, and higher compensation for our employees. We were remiss in one aspect of our outdoor parking on that field. We have a number of cars that are inoperable, but they're not salvage. They're, they're folks, one young man with a Mustang. Well, he's not too young, but he's, he's 10 years younger than me, so I'll call him a young man who has a Mustang that he drove in high school that he wants to restore. All the vehicles out there that aren't driving, the people are planning on restoring, they're not selling parts from or anything like that, but we were remiss in that, that until, I got this report from, from zoning, we, we weren't weed-eating, you know, underneath them and making sure that nothing was growing up around them, so I, we have just done that. It's not crucial to me that, that we keep the inoperable vehicles on site, but some of those customers have been around for a long time, you know, paying on that. They're not getting restored right away, but that is their intention. Other people have brought them in, restored them, and taken them out, and that in Glen County, or maybe this is just specific to our area about, I'm not sure about salvage or storing vehicles, but we will need places where people can bring a vehicle for their restoration needs, that they're going to have to store, you know, someplace. So, what I did is, is I just took some pictures of, after we, of the six or seven, six to eight vehicles that we have that aren't, aren't running, that had a lot of grass growing up underneath them, where we trimmed on around them, and it looks like any car parked on the grass, you know, anywhere else, with the exception of one under a tarp. And if I could hand those to you, Stephanie, maybe they can, they can get around if you all are interested in taking a look. But I just wanted to, before, and before we go ahead, we're going to have to move these vehicles, and we can take the inoperable ones and have them go, but I would like to, you know, the opportunity to, I was thinking what I would do is ask the customers that have been with us the longest, because I'm not going to have room for all the outdoor vehicles that we do have, but, but to take the customers that have been with us the longest and say, well, you know, yeah, you, you can keep that, we can move it someplace else, or do the inoperable vehicles, do they have to go, these, these vehicles that they want for restoration? Again, I don't know what salvage is, you know, if, if it's not moving, does that mean it's salvage? Or does that mean it's just a restoration project waiting to happen, or maybe waiting to happen that never happens? I don't know, but, but we can keep the area all around them clean, or not, you know, weed-eating more underneath them, and, and make sure that they, they're not a blight in terms of appearance as people go around the facility or around the corner.
Commissioners, you have any questions for the applicant?
I don't know if this would be for the applicant or the staff, but what, what about if the vehicle had a cover over it?
Yeah, we have one with a cover over it, because it's an old Cobra. It's, it's black in frame and black on the, on the cover that's there, because it was just in terrible shape, but this man feels that it's going to be worth something to restore someday. So, we do have one with a cover over it. We could, the inoperable ones, I think we could ask them to put covers on. I think where it got ugly is what's growing up underneath it, as opposed to the top part of it, but, you know, certainly, you know, I'd be happy to say, okay, it's inoperable, y'all need to do this, you know, put a cover on it, and then, we'll, and we will, more than we have, we'll keep up, you know, cutting and trimming around the vehicles.
Well, with the new facility, you're going to, this is all going to be either paved or gravel?
Yeah, yeah. We're only going to be able to keep a fraction of the vehicles that are in that field.
Okay.
And, and we might be moving forward on this project in terms of construction in about a year, so I, you know, you know, a timeframe to be able to let people know, you know, to move out if they need to find someplace else, and most of them will, they'll, you know, we won't have room for everyone that's there. And like I say, we can say, okay, if it's inoperable, it's, you know, no matter how long you've been with us, you know, you can have to find another place.
Sure. And I understand people wanting to restore something, and there's a lot of places they don't allow cars, they don't run in the driveway in certain subdivisions, but having a place for them is needed.
You know, the old saying about perception is reality. If it looks like a wrecked crappy vehicle, that's what the public sees. If they could at least make sure all the tires are, are rolling, and they're not flat sitting on the ground and maintained around it, I think that would improve.
Yeah, there are.
Perception considerably.
Well, that's a good point, and there are two out there with flat tires.
So, if their flat tires sitting on the ground, and the average passerby, that's just, that's just a junk vehicle, which I understand restoration, I've done some myself, so, but I would impose that they would all have operable tires and be able to be rolled if nothing else.
Yeah, yeah, and we could certainly absolutely do that right away. We'll let them know, anyone with a flat tire, they got to go out and replace it or move it.
Sir, in the future, would you allow vehicles to be placed in there after this site plan is approved? Would you be allowing more vehicles to be stored there on the ground?
There's, there's so little room, and we already have a number of, I think, we would just take a percentage of the ones that we have there now and try to find a place for them, and we won't be able to find a place for all of them.
So, if I understand you correctly, you're saying that what you have is all you're going to have, and that will not increase? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing item, so I will offer to the public, to anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application, please come forward and state your name. Hearing none, seeing none, any opposed? We will close the public hearing portion of this. Commissioners.
I guess the vehicle storage part, and I agree with Lee, you had a, you know, they were all inflated, and they looked like they could roll away. There's a need for some storage, but like I said, as long as it's not a junkyard, or, you know, the hoods are off and.
I have a suggestion.
Doors missing.
Part of the motion up there that they'll have to be operable.
Gary, I have a suggestion for the motion that we change the, all vehicles and trailers stored outdoors shall be operable, shall appear to be operable. You know, the motors might are running, but they, the tires are blown up, and you can roll them and move them around, and then, they can move them if they have to. Operable means, you know, you can crank it up and drive it away.
How about mobile? Ambulatory.
What is the, what does the ordinance say? That it just says operable?
No, it's operable, so in the ordinance, and this is in the section in the PD text that talks about repair centers, I don't know if you all remember with Golden Isles Collision, we had a similar conversation, and so what it says is you cannot have junk or salvage stored outdoors. So, yeah, that's where I kind of just, I got more into the operable, because then I thought, well, that means tires are aired up, you can, you know, go in and try to move the vehicle, you know, around the property if you needed to, so, but I think the biggest thing to me is, yeah, seeing, seeing tires deflated and the vehicles, you know, sitting sideways on the property, and, and of course, you know, like they said, and the weeds hadn't been trimmed up in quite a long time, so it sounds like that shouldn't.
The owner understands that, and I would make a motion, recommend approval of CUP 4151 with the following condition, all vehicles and trailers stored on the property shall be operable, with the understanding that that's, the tires are maintained, and you can roll them around and move them around.
And just to clarify, you did not add the word "shall appear to be," so you kept it the same.
I just left it alone, if he understands, if he understands our motion and agrees.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion?
I would like to add to that motion, the limit on, on the vehicles that are stored there now, that there would not be, be any more added to that?
Commissioner Lee, are you willing to amend your motion?
That will be fine.
We still have a second?
I don't know how you're going to control something like that, you know? How do you, how do you enforce something like that? Somebody has a, puts a car out there and whatever, you know? If we're going to have ordinances, we need to have some way to enforce them, and if, I don't think that's enforceable. You're not going to have somebody from the county staff riding around the county, checking, see how many cars are there now, and how many are there in the future, so I'm just...
Why would we not just use the verbiage that's in the PD text? I mean, it, you know, meet the requirements that's in the no junk or salvage vehicles. I think if they can roll, or whatever, you know, you could argue they're not junk or salvage. I mean, that, I don't know.
So, where do we stand on the motion?
I think we've got an understanding from the gentleman who owns the property, that he's not going to increase the number of vehicles there, and I'm, I'm comfortable with trusting him that he's not going to do that. If it gets to be a serious issue, then the county can step in. If it becomes, you know, a storage place for wrecked vehicles, we can get into it in using the current ordinance, and leaving the motion the way it is.
Just a pointed discussion, they did, the pictures that Stephanie showed, where the building is going to go, is going to be taking up space, which is going to prohibit him from putting additional vehicles out there anyway. So, I would certainly be in favor of leaving the motion the way that it was originally mentioned.
I'm okay with that.
And, Richard, we still have a second?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, good, okay. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, Janet. Thank you. Okay. That was easy. Our next item, SP, it's a site plan, SP 4150, exit 29 self-storage, 272 South Park, Southport Parkway, parcel ID 03-12691, one acre. The current zoning is planned development. Proposed zoning, mini warehouse self-storage. Pete Schoenauer, Tidewater Engineering Incorporated, agent for Jim Bonds Enterprises Incorporated, applicant and owner.
Okay. SP 4150, exit 29 self-storage, and I'll just kind of breeze through these real quick, since you are very familiar with this project from the last agenda item. So, this is the actual site plan. So, since they are doing a new building, they would be required to do the site plan for the new 14,400 square foot, climate-controlled self-storage building. So, this is the site plan on this page. Along Southport Parkway, they have included a type E buffer, and then, along Martin Palmer, they've included the type E buffer in this location as well. This area is going to be left open. The parking for warehouses is associated with a number of employees, and there aren't really going to be new employees as a result, really, of this particular building, so it's really just kind of an open area for drop-off, storage of vehicles, as we discussed, and then, this is where the building is located. And then, I will note, in the agenda packet that went out to you all last week, there was still a non-compliant comment from our GIS division. There were some changes that they wanted to make or have made, so I had initially had a condition in your staff report that all GIS requirements would be, need to be complied with. GIS has since updated their review, they are an okay, and so, I just included a page from our review history from the development review team, just showing that the GIS has okayed it, and so, that condition is no longer necessary, in staff's opinion. So, these are your possible actions for the site plan, and then, the recommended motion is to approve the application as submitted. And I will stand for any questions, and Mr. Schoenauer is here as well, representing the applicant.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
I have a quick one. So, since it's, you know, part of the approval seems to be... So since it's, you know, part of the approval seems to be tied to that it's gonna be part of what already is there with the shared driveway and not needing employee parking. So is the whole property then not subject to the buffer requirements?
So because this is a separate parcel, it is just this particular parcel. I know one of the more recent self-storage units that was approved, that's along Southport Parkway, they had included, it looks like a more of a modified type E buffer, but unfortunately, a lot of the buffers that we see around town, sometimes the weeds and the kind of hide what the plantings are actually, so there's a little bit of overgrowth, so it's hard to see that buffer. But no, it would just be this parcel that would be subject to this buffer requirement. But I think that's a very good point, since I think it's been kind of maybe inconsistently applied with other approvals for some of the buildings out in that Southport area.
Okay.
And I, I'm sorry, I will note, so because the site plan is tied to a conditional use permit, the conditional use permit would still be going in front of the Board of Commissioners for final approval, so of course the site plan would not be valid if the conditional use is not approved by the board.
Okay. Any further questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve SP 4150.
We've gotta let the applicant come forward and request action and potentially discuss it with the applicant. Will the applicant please come forward? I'm sorry.
We've already discussed it.
Good afternoon, I'm Pete Shonauer with Tidewater Engineering, and if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And I gotta admit, I did not drive by in the last day or two to take a look at this. I've been out here many times, but is there an overhead power line on this side of the right-of-way out there? I noticed there were some power poles they had in the pictures and all, and the only reason I'm asking is because of the large deciduous trees.
I think I looked at that, because I know we've come across that, like WoodSpring Suites, for instance, where we went to smaller trees because of overhead power, so. Is anything showing up on there with overheads? It's been so long since I've looked at this, Gary.
Well, I was just looking at the Google Earth, and it looked like there was one that went down Southport Parkway.
You know what, there is power, but it's fairly, it's not right on the property line like they are so often from what I'm looking at. Right, that's the power, that's overhead power there. Does it stop? Do you want me to turn it off? Do you have the pictures of the cars? Can you see the power? See?
Or we could make it subject to no large deciduous trees adjacent to
Yeah, oh, here we go. So this shows along, so that'd be Southport Parkway is there.
Yep.
Oh, it does, yeah, there's a power pole right there.
Okay. It's on both sides. Adjacent to our property. We can certainly put smaller trees like we did, again, for instance, at WoodSpring Suites, those crepe myrtles or something instead of an oak tree.
Right. Something that'll reach.
You good?
I'm good.
Any further questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Site plans are not public hearing items, so commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, once again, move to approve SP 4150, exit 29, self-storage, site plan with the understanding of no large trees planted.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, Janet, thank you. Okay, as I mentioned, Swent Storage has been withdrawn, so our Okay, so our next item is a site plan. SP 4153, 432 Pickrick Street, parcel ID is 03-13599. Property area is .45 acres. The current zoning is freeway commercial. Proposed zoning, proposed land use is storage for employee-owned vehicles. Clint Miller, owner and applicant.
Thank you. This is SP 4153, it's 432 Pickrick Street, and it is a new, is a new storage building for employee-owned vehicles in the freeway commercial zoning district. So he is, so currently the building has already been constructed, so the site plan is after the fact, but the project is a 1,344 square foot garage to store employee-owned vehicles. So this was a result of a code enforcement action. We did notify the applicant that the building had been constructed or installed without the building permit or site plan approval, and the applicant was very quick to respond to us and address the issue and submitted a site plan right after being notified. So we appreciate that quick response. So as you're aware, because it is freeway commercial, it does require a site plan because it is a commercial building. And a couple of things with the buffers, the planting, the planting has already been done on the property, so the site has been completed for a few months. So the request is to modify the type E buffers. What they do have installed along both Warren Mason and Pickrick is some low shrubbery, but there are no trees currently in that buffer, so they are requesting to keep the shrubs as is and not add trees to that buffer. So that would be one of the modifications they're asking the MPC to look at. And the second modification is, along the rear of the property, the freeway commercial zoning transitions to medium residential. So at the property line, there are some duplexes and multifamily that are behind this particular parcel, and so we do require a type A buffer between commercial and residential properties. So the type A buffer would either be 20 feet of landscaping or 12 feet of a fence and landscaping. Currently, they do have a chain link fence along this rear property line with a black mesh fabric, and so they are requesting to keep that as their buffer and not add landscaping at that particular location. So I'll show you some photos of what that currently looks like. So here is, here is the property right here, so it's a little bit blurry on this view, but this is Warren Mason along, right here. This is Pickrick. This is the property where the star is located. So this area back here, this is the multifamily residential that's behind the property. And then the freeway commercial is here. So there's a couple of photos of the property. This picture on the left is taken from Pickrick Street, so you're looking at the property here. The building where the arrow is pointing, this is the garage that was constructed. And as you can see, there is some low shrubbery that has been installed, and this is the buffer that they've installed on the property. And then here's the intersection of Warren Mason and Pickrick looking towards the property. And again, you can see the buffer along the Warren Mason Boulevard side. And then they do have some storage of the applicant's company's equipment, so commercial parking lot, and you can see the building in the distance there. Just again, another view of the buffers. And then this picture on the bottom right, this is showing the rear view. So this is the back of the garage. This is the property line where the multifamily is in this location. And earlier today, we took a photo, and the mesh, the mesh, black mesh fabric had fallen a little bit with some recent storms along this chain link fence. The applicant informed me this afternoon, they did go back out there and reinstall the black mesh, and it is all back the way it should be. So it's providing a visual buffer between the multifamily and the property. So this is the site plan. So this is their parking area here and driveway access off of Pickrick and the building here. And then these are your possible actions for the site plan. And then here's your recommended motion. Recommended motion is to approve it as presented and approving the buffer modifications. So those are to not install the trees in the type E and then keep the type A buffer, the chain link fence, and the black mesh fabric without the landscaping. And I'd be happy answering questions, and Mr. Clint Miller is here if you have any questions as well.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the staff?
I guess one of my questions, as you're saying, the Excuse me. One of my questions is, is the request is to modify the type A buffer. Type A buffer is not normally a fence with black mesh, is that correct?
It's defined as a privacy, a privacy fence is how it's defined. So there's some different ways to do it. Most of the time, we see more of a, you know, solid wood, you know, six-foot privacy fence.
And this abuts residential property, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you.
Would the applicant please come forward and request action? Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is Clint Miller, and I'm the owner of the property. We are, I was informed that I moved forward without site plan application, me not being very familiar with commercial property. And I went in and, as I do with all the projects I do, I try to make everything extremely nice and clean, and I went in and put a fence up and a nice electric gate and did a really nice job of fully landscaping and irrigating all the right-of-ways, and I, it's a small hedge now, but actually what I installed was a legestrum hedge, and it's growing. We just put it in in April, but within probably 18 months, it should be the full height of the fence, and you'll have 100% full privacy, is what's my goal, all the way around both sides of the commercial property. I use it just to park my construction company's trailers. I've got a couple of enclosed trailers, a couple of dump trailers, but it's all very well-maintained, and we keep it really neat, so.
Sir, can I ask you why you build a building to store your employees' cars in?
It's employees, it's not just employees' cars, it's employee vehicles and stuff. It's my, I keep some of my trailers inside to keep them out of the weather. It's a carport, it's not really a structural facility. It's a really nice carport, if you will.
So it's more for your commercial use than it is
That and, yes, sir, absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay.
So the employees would park there during the day?
They do, yes, sir. Well, not, I don't have but a couple, so, I mean, it's not for subcontractors to be going in and out all day. It's mainly, it's just that my guys have to go in and pick up a trailer, you know, they may park a car there and take a different vehicle, but it's mainly just for storage and parking.
Okay.
Actually, it does look better than some of the surrounding properties, right?
It looks a lot better than a lot of the surrounding properties, except the other one that I own that's adjacent to that. It looks equally as well. I own all of the multifamily product that is adjacent to this, so I have a really large vested interest in this area. I do not go in there trying to bring this area down. I went in there to try and dress that corner up, all the landscaping I did, and the same landscaping company that maintains all of my multifamily properties maintains this weekly. So, I mean, it was my goal to go in there and put something nice that everybody would be proud of, that we could actually keep maintained and look nice, and also have my company logos. I don't want it to look junky with my company being there, so.
That's coastal condominiums, I think it's called?
I own Old Mill Trace, which is the ones behind the cabinet shop and the daycare. That's coastal condominiums.
On the other side of the road.
Yes, sir. Coastal condominiums are the ones behind me, and those are quadplexes. There's actually four in a little square.
Yep, okay.
Any further questions for the applicant?
I want to make sure I understand, Mr. Miller, you say you own, you own the, those residential properties, or
I said, I own the ones that are diagonally placed. If you'll pull it back up, I'll show you the ones that Yes, well Here. I'll show you. All everything from here back. This is the Dan Cody's Cabinet Shop, Dan Cody's Gathering Farm, this is the church. Used to be a Thank You, and that's the Woodlands of the World, they're next to me. I do own the ones directly behind me, but those behind me are behind the Woodlands of the World and also behind the Woodlands.
So who is seeing the chain link fence with the black drape?
Believe it or not, if you'll notice, the entrance into the coastal condominiums is way down Warren Mason's, so there's only one, that one building right behind the gold star that actually is even abutting this property, and that is the rear section. All the doors enter from the driveway side, so it is the rear section of that one building right there. Other than that, everything else is only visible from Warren Mason.
But you don't own that property?
I do, no, ma'am. To make it long story short, I do not, no, ma'am.
Okay. I'm thinking back to down on Harry Drigger's Boulevard where they built the solar farm, and then they put that black mesh all over the fences, and it blows up all the time and it looks horrible. So I'm thinking about from a residential standpoint, how the people who live in that building would like seeing that, that black mesh. Would you be willing to fix that, where it's not a black, you know, black mesh hanging on the fence?
It's only on that one section of fence.
Right.
I did the landscaping on the front, because I felt like that's what would be most visible to everybody passing by.
Sure.
I'm not saying I wouldn't, I guess I'll do it if y'all make me do it, but I mean, I do a good job of keeping the place maintained, and I make sure the black screening is there. The place has been there since February, March, April, I guess, and I've never had anybody even think about complaining, because for the most part, you don't really, you can't even really see it from any other part of the property.
Okay, and I haven't been out there to see it.
Yes, ma'am.
So I can't, you know, I can't judge that.
I'm just Yes, ma'am, I fully
Just curious about that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Miller, who owns that behind you?
The bank, I believe.
No, not anymore.
Now that they sold it?
Yes, sir, they did. It was Dan Cody and Mike McDonald, a lot of that group, but it's a group of Indians now, I don't know, I mean, but there's an investment firm that actually bought that, and they live in Atlanta. They actually approached me to buy all of mine across the road, and I declined. But yes, there is one single owner that owns all those coastal condominiums now.
And Stephanie, did y'all receive any, anyone reach out from the signs, or?
No, yeah, we have not received any kind of comments from one way or the other.
Any further questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioners? This is, I'm sorry, this is
Get the motion back.
Yeah. Get the motion back up. This is a site plan approval, which is not a public hearing item, so once, yeah, there's the motion. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application SP 4153 as presented, approving the request to not install trees in the type E buffer and modify the type A buffer along the rear property line to include a chain link fence with black mesh fabric and no landscaping.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, Janet. Thank you, sir. So our last agenda item, thank you, is the public comment period policy, the draft for that. So, Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. So this is the draft, mainly planning commission, public comment period policy, and several months back, we had talked about having this on an agenda after we had the bylaws meetings, and I know we deferred it a couple times because the commission had some pretty long nights. So this is back before you. And some of the suggestions, when we had had just a discussion a few months ago, was to include a public comment period for site plans and other projects, but not exactly follow the same procedures we have for public hearings. And so just currently in this draft, on page two, under section E, what we have added in here is a 15-minute comment period for proponents and opponents, and then there would be a maximum of three minutes for comment. So right now, if you're doing a public hearing item, we allow folks to have five minutes to speak, and then we have 30 minutes each side. So this would be a reduction, it would be 15 minutes, and then it'd be three minutes per side. I'm sorry, three minutes total per speaker. And so that's really
15 minutes total?
15 minutes total, yes. I'm sorry, each, well, each for proponents and opponents. So 15 minutes for proponents, 15 minutes for opponents, so you'd have a total of a half hour. Under section, section 3C, there is, and there is some language in there about discretion to allow responses outside the overall time constraint, so if the commission had some questions of people speaking, you know, you can allow folks to talk a little bit longer, but other than that, you'd kind of be limited to this 15-minute proponent-opponent and three minutes. So that's really the gist of that. A lot of the other language follows closely to what the IPC, you know, currently has, just for site plans. So if you have any questions, or what your thoughts are on that?
My only comment is, section 3A, where the word chairman is used, it was changed and is represented as chairperson in section five, so we probably should make that language consistent.
Okay.
Other than that, it was exactly as we had discussed, at least in my opinion. Anybody else have any comment regarding this?
Sure. I guess my only concern is, when we get the public up speaking, we get a lot of, well, I don't like it, even though it meets all the requirements and it's zoned for what they're applying for. And I guess if we can keep them on task, where they have to actually comment about site plan requirements, maybe give them a copy of section 619.2, and they have to keep their comments, you know, pertaining to those particular items, and I'm getting a little facetious here on this, but just the people that get up there and complain that they don't want people looking in their bathroom.
Gary, I agree with you, but I don't know how you're going to stop it. It's just like, it's nice, I mean, you know, people are going to get up and say what they want to say. They have the opportunity, that's, you know.
Well, I think, I think your point about keeping them on task is going to be the key, and that's going to be up to the chairman to, or the chairperson to.
Can we have a sergeant-at-arms or something?
That's a good idea.
Well, you know, we've had discussions about this, but if, the vast majority of our site plans, we have very little public input. I think this will only be applicable to those items where it's a hot political topic.
Similar to Majestic Oaks.
I would suspect this will take, this will be impacted, one out of five, one out of eight of the site plans. With the exception of, you know, maybe one or two individuals who almost always come, but.
True.
That's usually just, that would be a three-minute exercise that we would have to endure. So I'm not opposed to it. I don't think it's going to be a big deal for us, in my opinion.
And once again, since we've taken the preliminary plat approval away from the planning commissions, this is, well, I mean, the Board of Commissioners did, excuse me, which I agreed with. I think this is a good opportunity for the community to weigh in if they have any concerns or objections or anything like that. It's their only opportunity, so.
That's likely to be out of control, this gentleman standing here anyway, so I think we're in good hands.
Any further discussion points regarding this?
Do we need to make a motion on this, or does it just go to the Board of Commissioners for their approval?
Yeah, I, I apologize, I should have put something on the screen, but I would recommend that you do make a motion to recommend this with the changes regarding the chairman and chairperson to the VOC, and the VOC will take it up at a future meeting.
But this is a policy, it's not an ordinance change, correct?
Correct. This is, yeah, standalone policy, yep.
But the policy still has to be approved by the VOC.
Oh, yes.
It is, yeah, under section, section six on the last page, on page three, yeah, it does, yeah, at least four members of the MPC and the Glen County Board of Commissioners, so if there were any future changes to this, it would have to go through the same process of going before the MPC and the board.
If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the public comment period policy, as written with the correction from chairman to chairperson, be approved by this committee and sent to the VOC for review and possible approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, Janet. Okay. Stephanie, is there anything else that needs to be brought before us?
No, thank you, thank you all for taking part in the work session last night, and I know it's tough to have two nights in a row, so thank you all for your dedication and service to our community, and then we'll, we'll see you all in December.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We're adjourned.